Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, January 21st at 7:00 PM. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
Really, you miss Lisa?
Yeah.
I had to stop because I started getting an echo.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, sorry, guys. I started and I was like, that's probably causing an echo.
Well, it actually wasn't you. I think Matt got ahead of me and then I could hear. So between me, Matt, and Les, we were kind of out of sync. Anyway, anyways, I don't have any announcements this evening. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything they would like to discuss? Seeing as none.
No, hold on. Matt, were we able to queue up that trailer?
I can certainly try.
All right, I think we'd like to do that. Guys, you forgive me for not being there. Hal contacted me a couple of days ago. He's out of town. I had every intention of going, but I hit a wall later late earlier today, and I think it's best that I stay away from you all. But I do want to announce to the townspeople that the movie that was filmed in Soldiers' Field in October of 2022 is finally making it to the big screen. They released today the trailer of the movie, again, shot at Soldiers' Field. This is an exciting time for the cast and crew. I don't know if this is going to win Grammys or Emmys, but it definitely has run its course through the independent film festival market. So before you play that, Matt, I just wanted to quickly read some work out of IndieWire, excuse me, from Samantha Bergerson, just kind of painting a picture as to what this movie's all about. Reading from her, "How does one cope with entering their own seventh inning stretch in life, aka middle age? According to cinematographer Carson Lund's directorial debut, 'Ephes', it's best to leave it all on the baseball field. Ephes, which debuted in the 2024 directors Fortnite at Cannes, centers on a final game at a small Massachusetts baseball field before its demolition in 1990s, or in the 1990s. The recreational league of players cling to their passions and friendships despite the impending end of an era." And there was one other piece in here that I thought I would highlight. The film was a critics pick at IndieWire with the review setting how the feature unfolds with the rhythm of a baseball game itself. But I will tell you, it definitely feels like an over-50 baseball game, but you're watching the whole thing. But if that's available, I'd love to just show that to the audience that's currently watching and for those that might catch it online. It is on YouTube, of course, so.
All right, I'm screen sharing. We'll see. That's the audio. That's the mystery. So we'll see if we pick it up. And we're not. Try that again.
Where's Carrie Underwood when you need her?
Still my phone.
Take me out to the crowd. Buy me some peanuts and crackers, Jim.
Mom, let's cheer for Julie.
Gentlemen, let's play.
A board has from past begin construction on the currently unnamed middle school of Douglas.
Let's go, nice one. Take your coat. Hey!
It means building on top of Soldiers' Field where recreational baseball teams have faced off for decades.
Here's just one big backyard. My backyard. I need to be put down.
Last game.
You play ball, kid?
Yeah.
Do yourself a favor. Don't.
It's all combat. Life. This game. Combat.
Nice to be back on this grass field. It's a shame those priests are building a school here.
Can't quit this field, huh? Doesn't want to stop playing.
But what are we doing here? Come on!
They're going. Now the whole game will be pointless.
It was already pointless, fellas.
It may throw the Ephes. The Ephes pitch is a type of curveball so unnaturally slow that it confuses the batter, makes him lose track of time.
It's kind of like baseball. I'm looking around for something to happen.
Who's getting to it?
I've been watching this for an hour and I still don't understand baseball.
There you have it. Bob Josie, a star, well, not a star, but makes an appearance in the movie. Didn't make the trailer, but that is going, coming out in theaters March...
14th.
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 The national rollout. Hopefully, that's the last I disrupt this meeting, Mike. I'll give it back to you and appreciate your running the meeting for me. Thank you.
Number five, local cultural council appointment. I believe, Ms. Peck, that's why you're here.
That's me.
Would you like to join us?
Come to a chair.
Thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome. My pleasure, actually.
You want to say a few words of why you have this strong desire to join us?
Well, you know, having lived in town, gosh, the last 28 years, worked at the Douglas Public Schools the last 10 years, being involved from PTOs to scouts to now, it's a different part of my life. The kids are done. And I'm like, I am on the board of the Blackstone Valley Community Chorus, and I've been on the other side of the grants, like receiving the grants for them. So I saw that they needed volunteers, and I thought, why not?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yes. And it's just nice to see what's going on in town, what's being funded, and, you know, sort of look forward to seeing what is happening. Yeah.
Nice. Anybody have any questions for Victoria Peck? Tim, you have any questions?
I'm not. Hi, Vicki. How are you?
Hey, Tim, how are you?
Better.
Appreciate you stepping up and volunteering.
Absolutely.
Entertain a motion to appoint Victoria Peck to the local cultural council for a period, a three-year period ending June 30th, 2028.
So who?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor. We need to do a roll call because you're remote, Tim.
Smith, aye.
Stephen's aye.
Bone, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
You'll need to get, yeah, you want to do it? Go for it.
You gotta get it sworn in, the clerks.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, no problem. Just let me do what I need to do. You're going to mess everything up. You like the Pledge of Allegiance all of a sudden.
We would have had it in rhythm.
All right.
Thank you very much for coming in.
You're more than welcome. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Number seven, we're going to skip over the number six, which is the review of the Mass Plan Committee appointments for the planning board. That is their appointments. It's a subcommittee of the planning board. Number seven, Council on Aging Food Program donation account. Patrice would like to create a donation account. I believe we may have something in our packet for that. It's from the Adult Social Center. The Douglas Adult Social Center is seeking the approval of a new donation account to be created for the purpose of the Council on Aging Food Program. This account will be used to purchase food or other supplies related to the program, such as cookware, general kitchen supplies, gloves, cleaning, sanitizing supplies, and food storage supplies submitted by Patrice Russo. You may have any questions on this? Seeing as none, I would entertain a motion to approve that creation of the donation account.
I'll make a motion to approve the donation account for the Adult Social Center COA Food Program.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Smith?
Oh, Smith, aye.
Stephen's aye.
Bone, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Number eight, authorize the town administrator to sign the Board of Health Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Program Funds Award. We did have quite the landslide on this. We've earned three points, and we have received $735. Anybody have any questions on that?
Board of Health Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Program Funds Award in town.
Are you looking to me?
No. No, if somebody, I don't know if somebody's hacked into this or if it's a legitimate question.
I think that, I think that was asking or answering a question as to what are they talking about, but he's muted now. We're good.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
All right, looking for a motion? To authorize the town administrator to sign the Board of Health Mass DEP Recycling Dividends Program and Funds Award?
So move.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor.
Smith, aye.
Stephen's aye.
Bone, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. There are no meeting minutes. We'll skip over number nine. Number 10, Northeast Main and North Street intersection discussion. Chief, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Do you have any comments on that?
Nothing that you don't already know. It's been a problem area for us with the trucks of late, and probably in the last three months, we've had two trucks, big trucks, tractor-trailer trucks, that have tried to take that right-hand turn. And they went up on the common there, took out a pole, took out a DOT sign. Both instances, we were able to figure out who it was, and they've made restitution. But you would think common sense would prevail in that area, especially if you're driving a big truck. I spoke with Adam this morning, and right now, we'd like to put a sign up anyway to get started advising large trucks not to attempt that right-hand turn.
Should we have a no right-hand turn at all for anybody?
Well, I would leave that up to you guys. That would be, I think, kind of a big adjustment for regular traffic. You can make the turn with the cars. I mean, it can be difficult, the bigger the vehicle, and depending how many cars are coming out of North Street. I think we can definitely do it for the trucks, but if you want to make it no right turn at all, we'd just have to adjust the signs.
So just out of curiosity, other than words with the, like, on a weight limit sign for a bridge, do you put the picture of the truck that they can't take a right with that?
Yeah, I have to talk to Adam and see what they have for signs. I mean, there are a couple of signs out there with different-sized trucks. And again, like I said, common sense would, you would think would prevail. We've had two drivers driving tractor-trailer trucks that had no business trying to take that right, and one almost actually jackknifed. We were fortunate enough to get, to be able to get it out of there because that would have caused a nightmare. But again, I would have to talk to Adam and see what's available for sign types.
He almost got the hydrant, too.
Do you have any issue with anybody coming out of North Street trying to take a left with a trailer truck?
No, I haven't seen, I haven't really seen a problem with that. Most of the trucks that come off there take that right onto Main Street. Very rarely will they try. But even when, when cars try and take that left there, coming off of North Street, it can get a little hinky, depending on lower traffic.
So unless anybody else has another suggestion, I think we put this on next agenda for Adam to come in and with the type of signage that we could use for that?
Yeah, maybe a couple.
Do you have anything on that?
I just, I guess I'll ask Adam to call DOT. There should be a design standard for the, depending on how you look at it, maximum or minimum angle of incidence that allows for turns to safely be made from one road to another. My civilian opinion is no one should take a right.
Well, that's why I asked that.
You can't see, and, you know, I used to drive a Mini Cooper, and I wouldn't try to bang a right from Northeast Main onto North, and even in a Cooper. That's just, that's insane. And you can't fix stupid, so there are guys who think they can get in a 50-foot long eighteen-wheeler around that corner. The more signage we put up, the better off we're going to be because it just, but the signs need to be in two places. One, where you cannot take the turn, but then you have to remind or tell people where they should be taking the turn. So for access to North Street, they should be going down Charles or C.
Yeah, you can't go down Charles because they'll never make the right at the end of Davis Street.
That's another turn.
So now you're gonna, if you start doing directing traffic that way, you're gonna direct them all on the C Street, and that's barely a cow with wide because everybody parked on both sides.
Exactly where I was going. The, you can't, I mean.
They almost need to be told.
C's, C's not allowed.
Half a mile past, you can turn around, you know.
Why would Charles not be an option to take a right on the Charles?
Because you can't take a right off of Davis Street. They're coming off Davis Street on the Northeast Main. They're not coming just Northeast Main.
I'm not making any assumption about where they're coming from. They're coming from Northeast Main, from Harford Avenue and Utsbridge.
Harford Avenue would be fine, yeah. What if they're coming down 16 or Davis?
About 16, they should, they have absolutely no business trying to take that way. But that begs the question of, if you're coming from Davis Street through 16, why are you trying to access Route 146 from Douglas via Cova? That makes no sense at all. They should be going to 146 at the end of Davis.
Hey, Chief, do you have any body cams so Matt could understand what these drivers' mentality is?
Yeah, no, you're not going to figure that out, Matt, simply because the guy that we had to try and take the right there on North Street that almost jackknifed was on his way to Connecticut. So he didn't even need to take that right. He just should have stayed straight all the way. So we almost had a major headache for absolutely nothing. He was trying to get to Connecticut, so.
Hundred percent lost.
Yeah.
GPS.
I think, I think, I think the simple approach, just for the onset, at least have Adam, like I said, reach out to DOT, find out what kind of, if there's any standardized signage for that, short of putting no right turn at all. I understand what the chief's saying. It could become problematic with traffic if nobody can turn that. Because other than trailer trucks, we don't have much problems with that intersection, Chief?
No, other than the trailer trucks, especially of weight and the bigger trucks. But I can get with Adam, and we can consult with our DOT rep and see what they recommend for signs. And the last sign that was actually taken down was a DOT sign. We made contact with them today. They're going to get restitution from the last driver, but we should consult with them, and then maybe we can report back to you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we should be able to figure out something for the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I would think so.
Anybody else have anything on this? Tim, you have anything?
Now I'm looking forward to the new sign.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Good night.
Good night. Number 11, Cottage Colony. I believe everybody received the email that was sent to me. I had Lisa forward it to everybody with the little video of the water running down over his walkway. Huh?
I received it, yep.
Yeah. After I received that, check with the administrator and make sure you have any issue with it. I went down and seen Chris Popker in the assessors' office and dug up some information on Cottage Colony. And a couple of different ways, and this is more for the benefit of anybody that's paying attention to this meeting. There's a couple of different ways you could do a private way. One, that the, all the abuddists will own the wither their property to the center of the street. The others, which there's a few of them in town like this, for whatever reason, people chose to retain the ownership of the right-of-way. And that's what it is here. This, this piece of property was originally one whole piece, and then they broke off all these lots, and they specifically called them out to end at the right-of-way with the 25-foot right-of-way. So whether it is a deed or not, it still remains a portion of the original parcel. So the heirs of, if you look back in the deeds, there was a Mary R. Casey, and her heirs are the ones that owned this. And I know during one of the cases that we had on ZBA, I believe her name was Ms. Sullivan, came in with a map and stated that she owned these roads, right? Which Chris has pointed out to me that she does up, it appears that she owns it up halfway up Cottage Colony, not the entire thing. The other, the other side's owned by somebody else. The question that was posed in our email was whether or not we would go down there and fix it. That area, I think it's private property, and I think it's a civil matter. We have a lot of roads in town, approved, accepted roads that need repaired. To go in and start repairing private roads, I don't think it's what we should be doing. In this particular case, if we looked at, what's the cost of doing that road? That road's 1,373 feet long. So if you, the roadway engineering, design, survey, easements, oversight, et cetera, is about 185,000. Reclaim and pave, 20 feet wide, 1,373 feet long, is another 460. 16 catch basins with the pipes is about another 210. 2,600 feet of berms, assuming that it's on both sides. Loom seed rip raft, well, 2,600 feet of berms would be 20 grand. Loom seed rip rafts, sock waddles miscellaneous, 3500 bucks. These cost estimates were taken from a 2024 paving project that totals $878,500. If you divide that into the abuddists, each abutting property, that's about $27,453 per abutting lot that's in there.
Just on the math, a question. Their 25-foot right-of-way right now, and the paving width is?
20 feet.
20 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And then that's.
Yep. What I did, this isn't my own math. I reached out to the highway superintendent to get acure figures that we, so we'd understand what it represents. We can't just casually just say, yeah, go ahead and fix it because it's not that simple. There's a lot to it, right? Anybody have any comments on this, questions on this?
The way I see it, it's, like I say, it's privately owned. It's a, and it's a right-of-way. It's not like it's a public way. It's a right-of-way. So unfortunately for the owners, they'd better come to some sort of agreement with the owner of the right-of-way, I feel, to either maintain it or bring it, bring it up to, I don't want to say up to spec, but to improve it. I know people personally that live up there who have taken on their own to plow and fix the roads, but that's neither here nor there. It's a private way. And I don't think we should even step one inch of responsibility towards it as a town.
Something like this, Matt, with this, in this particular situation where it's, assuming it's a privately owned right-of-way, and by an individual, not by the abuddist, if the town was to go in there, would that, would that create an upbetterment to assess to the owners? How would that work?
Yeah, it would. So we have any number of different scenarios in town, so we go through a lengthy checklist to determine whose issue this would be. My understanding of the maps and deeds associated with this property is that the so-called right-of-way is entirely on the property of one property, and that others' access to it is deeded access as a right to pass and repass over. But the ownership is vested entirely in one owner. So a petition is irrelevant because unless, if the owner here is Ms. Sullivan, if she doesn't ask for it, it can't happen because it's her property, the whole thing, except for the other piece that I believe belongs to one of the fortunes or their heirs. So in which case, these abuddists really have no right to ask for the repairs to be made or to absorb the betterment. If we were in a different situation, if this was a so-called private way where each individual abutting owner owned to the center line of the road within the bounds of their lot, that, different. So they could petition, they can ask the town, but yes, there would still be a betterment. Full expense would be charged, and I believe it's actually split up by the number of running feet of frontage that you have, not by your number of interests you have. So, you know, not to mince words with anybody, if you have an easement to pass and repass over somebody else's private property, and they do not maintain it in safe condition and you hurt yourself, you should sue them.
It's a civil.
It's a private force of action.
Correct, civil.
Because the easement is basically, makes you an invited guest, and the failure to maintain it in safe condition is a liability on the owner. After a couple runs at that, you'll see how quickly people's, people change their tune. But it's also true that people change their tune very quickly when they're presented with the cost of a betterment. That municipality, no matter where we are, will pay far more to have this work done than a private property owner ever would because we must comply with our own standards as well as the standards of others.
And prevailing wage.
Stormwater management, the depth and width of the paved area, and simply the prices that we get charged with 10 and a half mark up because people see us as a cash cow. That's just the way it is. I think those prices are accurate for what's involved because there's a lot of, see, because there's a lot of stormwater drains, you said 16?
Yep. Yeah, 16 catch bases.
That's an awful lot of work, and if you want to work right, it needs to be engineered. So that's where you stand. Sometimes it is better to let sleeping dogs lie and try to thwart things that, it's obvious that there's not a lot of goodwill down there, but facing the possibility of litigation sometimes gets people to be able to mollify their position a little bit. You can't take on every one of these. It's much more concerning, and it gets a lot more vague if the. concerning, and it gets a lot more vague if the road becomes impassable to our public safety vehicles if that roadway is the only way to get access to multiple people's homes. And I don't think we're there yet in that conversation. But we could take it into our own hands in that, in that situation and make repairs and charge for it. I don't think we're there.
And just for the record, I did notify the, Mr. Dermott that sent me the email and made him aware of the fact that it would be on tonight's agenda. So he was given the opportunity to come and speak if, if that's what he chose to do. Anybody else have anything on this? Tim? No?
I'll just weigh in just for?
What's that?
I'll weigh in on the side. I, I agree with Ross. I mean, we've got other private ways, and those neighborhoods kind of maintain their private way.
We actually have accepted streets that are in need of repair.
Priorities.
Some are in pretty tough shape, so.
Appreciate the work you did.
All right. Number 12 Municipal Light Plant Discussion. Do we have anything on that tonight, Matt?
As I've said, I, I'm looking for the board to pick this up and run with it. I will say that with the passage of time, you know, we're professionals around here, so we push things quickly because we need to get answers. And there's a tremendous amount of work involved in this conversation. So the guidance of the board is absolutely essential to tailor our efforts towards what it is you want to accomplish and what it is you don't want to see in this conversation. And that is entirely up to you. I was rereading the ICMA Code of Ethics today for unrelated reasons. But within the Code of Ethics of my profession, it is up to the elected officials to determine policy. It is up to us appointed officials to implement your role.
Okay.
And I just kind of want to, I'll throw out some parameters so that you begin to understand what the moving parts are in the project. Typically, well, not typically, it is a theater in the data center industry to have redundant sources of power because their operations must go 24/7, 365. The maximum downtime they're really allowed in a year's time is about 14 minutes. And I really consider it a viable source of resource unless they can meet that standard. That's a very high standard. So no one will locate a data center of any kind, whether it's cryptocurrency mining or artificial intelligence or your standard data center, you know, processing large amounts of transactions or what have you. No matter what the purpose of what goes on inside, it won't happen just because you have a substation outside that gives you the power. If there is not a secondary source of power, then it's not a viable system. So what you see in a community like Westfield, that is pretty, pretty far down the road of having a data center built in their community, they have the power to manage from the, I believe that's an ever-source community, so from the ever-source portion of the grid, they've got the 800 megawatts they need for that. They also have an existing power plant of 400. They're going to build another one, 400. So there will be onsite generation as well as a feed from the grid. That meets the check, that checks the box for two sources. The other thing I've, so that's, that's where we're at. So we're discussing the potential with project proponents of how big a substation would we be able to support here? Would grid be supportive of that effort? Because without a substation, the entire conversation is pointless. Who would own it? And then bigger question is, what is the redundant source of power? And you really can't generate and store enough renewable energy to, to really be that secondary source of power. You could certainly green up a project and reduce the size of some of the assets being built if you had a large battery reservoir that had really nice clean power that you could put back over to the, to the site. The other project I have ongoing with the principal assessor is to look at a case study of a data center and the revenue impact it had on the community. Because that's a piece of information that you should have before you make a policy decision. We have assumed to this point, because of the back of the envelope math, we've been able to do with what we know so far, what data centers do, that, you know, a data center with a full buildout as well as all the personal property tax generated by the assets inside might be up here. Your standard warehouse is here. Being mindful of, of the fact that doing nothing with the site puts you way down. But this gap is really important because if it's narrow, it doesn't make any sense to move heaven and earth and face all the controversy of discussing onsite power generation if all you're going to get is an extra couple hundred grand in revenue over years. That's not even a reasonable conversation. So rather than speculate about it, I've asked the assessor to create a scenario so that we can start to look at numbers, what those numbers really mean for the town versus a warehouse. And a warehouse is not wildly popular. We learned that during the master plan survey. And yet, at the same time, the community needs all that information to make a choice, right? So if you have a logistics center, you're going to have certain impacts. You're going to have traffic impacts. You'll have positive revenue. And you won't have to do any, you, you will still need a substation. I should back up and just say that. So if you want to build warehouses over there?
If we do nothing, we need a substation.
Yeah. Those, those can be kind of tucked away. They don't need to be like right in front of you, like the power connection at the solar farm in Huntsbridge, it's like, far away on the street, you drive by it, and it's hideous. These things can be put, whether or not that obvious. However, you're going to need one, one way or the other. Because the one fact that, that there are two things that we can't escape. One is, as a small community, it will be very difficult if the forecasts come true and energy is in short supply at certain times of the day and certain times of the year, if the Commonwealth's plans for the electrification of the economy proceed at the same pace as they have. So you would have more and more and more electricity usage in those smaller communities like Douglas that are at the end of feeders would likely be the communities that suffer rolling brownouts and blackouts, which have been, I believe, blackouts, more rolling brownouts. And who does that matter to? Doesn't matter to the town so much. We have buildings that have generators that will kick on. So if we're not maintaining the necessary voltage and amperage through our systems, our generators will kick on and supplement the power or supplant the power so that we have good, clean, reliable power in our buildings. It's more an issue for citizens. And we can sit here now and speculate. I don't like people think I'm crying wolf. I'm just using my imagination as a normal, rational person. If I was owning a restaurant and I had a substantial walk-in refrigerator with all of my supplies in it, and I don't have a generator, and there's rolling brownouts, what does that do to the economics of my business? Do I lose what I have in my shelves? Who's going to cover me for that? If I'm an elderly person and I have a very expensive pharmaceutical product that's in my refrigerator that I infuse at home, or having somebody come to my home to infuse into me, and it's 14,000 bucks a dose, the temperature can't go above a certain level, those are, those are the people we're worried about, right? People who don't necessarily have a generator or other sources of power, who would be losing some aspect of their life because of low power. And it may be that that never materializes. I just am very concerned because people in positions of power and knowledge are consistently warning about this being in our future. I don't make this stuff up, and would choose not to. I'm just going to conferences, listening to the speeches being made by people who have a lot of knowledge of the power industry, saying this is a very realistic possibility. So that's one. And the second scenario that is of concern is that no matter how hard we try to maintain highly cost-efficient operations in the town government, after five or six years, if you don't have ongoing additions to the revenue base, you start to run up against limitations. So I don't want anybody to misinterpret anything I've said. I don't say the oh word because I don't ever want to ask for another. I don't want to be involved in, in any effort to ask for another. I don't think it's necessary. I think economic development is the proper way to go forward, to provide the revenue base of the community, continue to enjoy the services at the level they expect. But you can't go like that forever. So you've, you've improved the tax base, you've diversified it. Let's say we went from 96% residential maybe to closer to 89%. It's still a really high ratio. And if it doesn't grow, you will eventually catch up to it. Because the things we buy as a municipality are growing in cost faster than our ability to raise revenues. And eventually, that will catch up to me across, like you did in 20, fiscal 2018. So that's part of the ongoing planning of the future of the community that is an open conversation. And as I said in 2018, and every year since then, the town runs a very lean program. We, we don't have a lot of recreational programs in the summer for, for youth. You know, most of our programs are through the library and through the school system or voluntary outside organizations that, that support youth sports. We don't have a super big fire department with the NFPA compliant manning on the script, on the equipment that we run. We simply don't. It's not even close. We get by because we say we're a combination department. We want to continue that going into the future. You just have to be mindful of the fact that it's more and more challenging to get paramedics that want to work here, that have a necessary background and experience. And the same thing goes for the schools. Probably the single most expensive thing that jumps out when you look at the community profile of Douglas. This is one of the smallest communities in Massachusetts that has a full K through 12 school system, 24/7 ambulance and fire coverage, an accredited police department. For K through 12 schools, you know, this year will be, close to 80% of all new revenues are going to go to them. And you simply cannot escape the competition that school districts all across the Commonwealth are conducting to recruit teachers and maintain teachers for the, throughout their tenure and their, during their career. So that's kind of, that's the reality of taking the long view. We don't want to take a short view and hide our heads in the sand and pretend we don't know what's going on with, with costs of municipal power. So that all comes back to this. I just want to make one thing clear. When we talk about the statute, the municipal light and power statute, there is nothing that requires a town to take over the distribution network. So namely, poles and wires. You can have a municipal light and power and only have a power generation supply asset and connect back to grid. And a lot of people say grid is highly resistant to losing its territory and not being able to charge those fees. So you, if you say you want to buy your poles and your wires, you know, you get into this tit for tat with grid over, over what that costs, and there's a certain amount of complexity. Some of those poles are Verizon poles, phone company poles, others are owned by the cable company. It becomes a complex negotiation. All we've ever suggested as a possibility for the community is to be a power supplier and sit behind the substation. So I, I will honestly, I mean, I can't make good lines for my bosses. But if we could have some kind of guidance before the end of April or before too late in the beginning of April, it would be very, very helpful.
So I, as an individual, for me to give you input into this, I'm looking for cost, I'm looking for impact, I'm looking for your generation source, whether it's a, a power plant, co-generation plant, a substation, right? And what the funding's going to be for that, right? And how long is it going to take to build it, right? If it takes, if you can build a substation and have no, there's no information backing anything, I'm going to say, it's just an example. If it takes a substation a year to build, and it takes a, a power plant 10 years to build, which I know that's not even realistic because I've watched it go up in Blackstone. That, that's a key factor because you may miss the boat, right? It's like, people trying to get into the marijuana industry now, that, that ship has already sailed, right? So it could be the same thing with this data center. You, you have interest in the state government and you're also in the federal government on this AI stuff that's out there. So there's a, it's the new buzzword of the week. Data centers and AI and all that other nonsense. But that, if you want my input, that's, I need that, that kind of stuff to put back there. The, the beer to make a decision to help you in to get to there. But it's also going to, you're going to have to put together a pretty good program or proposal, sales pitch, however we want to word it, for the general public so the community can make a decision. That is, we're elected to in a leadership role for the town. But we have to listen to what they want, right? It's not going to be an easy task to go about it. It's encouraging that you said, because my thought, my thoughts were going in my head as you were talking, that we could do just the generation portion of it and contribute to the system versus owning the poles and the wires and all that other stuff. Because now you're creating a whole new department, more overhead, more equipment. We can't even get a dump truck, and forget a bucket truck, right? It just creates a new problem. So from a business standpoint, those thoughts start jumping in my mind. But I'm more than happy to help you move this along as an individual. I'm sure the rest of the guys are too. And I keep saying individual because I don't want to make it sound like that. I'm trying to speak for everybody sitting here and just making my own statements. The, but we have to have good information to put out to people to get our feedback as ultimately what do they want in, in town? I know the master plan's doing a lot of work. But that's a selective group of people. When, when this comes about, we'll fill the auditorium at the, at the high school to talk about it. So anybody else have anything that they can help Matt with his quest to move forward in this? Because I sympathize with them. We've wasted half dozen meetings anyways, just having a, and vague talk. We just need to jump into it and push it along. It's either going to go it or it's not, so.
Kind of on the same, same lines as you, Mike. I just, a few notes I wrote down as Matt was talking. And some of it would be the site appearance, size, infrastructure, demands as far as to maintain this. Do we need water supply? Do, what do we need to? I think just physically, maybe some examples of what?
I should probably also, I don't want to cut my memory off, but I should throw in at this point that power plants are way beyond the ability of municipal light and power. What you're talking about, what position do we take? Would either be this, as the owner, operator of the substation and the controller of that connection and take a fee from the off-taker from that. connection and take a fee from the off-taker from that, or battery storage and actually own the power stored in the batteries. The logic being that that's a way to diversify the town's revenue source and get additional revenue from a project that's not something taxes. We would never have the resource to build a power plant, billions of dollars, to go through permitting and all the way. It's not. I'll take a quick step back. Because this was something I learned in life as a business consultant, that a lot of times folks don't appreciate it at all. It's just how big some of these companies are, how much money they will throw at a project because of the return they anticipate.
Anticipate, yeah.
And I can remember talking about siting facilities, like, and almost, at the time there was a lot of money, a billion dollar washing machine plant in a tiny, tiny little city in Arkansas, Surcey. And, you know, the locals were overwhelmed by the concept that Goodman Manufacturing was going to build this huge factory in their town. They were real excited at first and they started thinking through, well, this will be our only employer, it'll be our biggest taxpayer, you know? And there were a lot of questions asked about that. When we're talking about AI and data centers, we're talking about the fifteen, twenty biggest companies in the world. I didn't mean to cut.
No, that's kind of where I, where I was stopping anyway, just so physically, we could see what we're talking about too. That's, you know, drop the picture of it or examples, just.
Then we can do examples. So I don't want to, so I'm stuck. If I push my staff and the project proponents or even landowners to really detail conceptual plans, that's money for that, right? So I think in a very vague kind of way, we can, if we can answer the question, if you were going to take gas off of a pipeline, where would you be? Would you be all the way over North Street? Or would you be more likely to locate that facility very close to the pipeline?
Right, exactly.
I think that answer, that question is answered there. You're going to see whatever gets built there and takes gas, you can see it. Because it just doesn't make sense to run pipeback all over.
No, great, I agree, yeah.
A couple of examples, sorry, a couple of examples, you can go on, I'm familiar with Concord has Concord Light and Power, Wellesley has Wellesley Light and Power. You can go on their town website, just look up the stuff. It gives you a resource that you can at least see how they structured some of their light and power. What Matt is describing was less than what they're actually doing. They actually have their own setup with their own people and all this other stuff. But it'll give you some, a little more information to help you get further along in this thought process. Because as Matt says, time is of the essence and that's why I just decided to take the approach that I took with it tonight, just to, we either, well, I can't say the term that was used when I was growing up, so it's either sit down or get up, right?
That's pretty nice, sit down and get up.
Yeah, I just think, coming from the data center world, I think there's two projects here that you're, you kind of have to do a cost analysis on. One is the substation, you know, in what, you know, available, you know, state funding potentially, or the in the cost benefit analysis of that, and what the long-term, you know, runout is going to be for that. So just some rough idea or assessment. And I think same thing with data center coming to town. You know, I had to think of like the nearest active one, you know, would be, I know Lowell had one near area, Littleton, Littleton had one. But then there's the, sometimes these go empty, you know, and they could, they could go quick. But again, if you have a big client, you know, I mean, they still could have a situation where they're there for ten years and then vanish and move somewhere else. So there's that downside with that. But they're usually one-story, two-story buildings, no bigger than that. But I think if you do some cost analysis and revenue charting for that, at least get the ball rolling. You know, and I think it's the latest state buzz. Like, we missed the boat on the last few state buzzes, which was like life science, a big investment, they want to do life science, and then they want to do pharmacy, you know, and so this is the latest state buzz is around data centers and being a support state center. But I think we got a very unique environment, you know, location potential for them to think it's working out.
And not for nothing, we didn't actually miss that buzz, so you weren't on the board at the time. But there was Project Dragonfly, and we were a finalist in a national search. Douglas is one of three communities that made it to the end of the conversation. And that was a major biologics pharmacy production.
Yeah, that came real close.
And we are really close. Yeah, ultimately, that was a really massive water user. And where they ended up locating, I believe in Raleigh-Durham, they had a more significant supply of water than we were given to promise. And that was it, that was what tipped it.
No, I think.
But it's, just to finish the start, you can only do economic development in sectors that are growth. We really don't want to get in the textile business or the, you know, the widget business because those industries are past your buy. And if you don't have an existing plant like you're waiting in Ashaway, Rhode Island, there's a textile plant that still makes catfet strings for tennis rackets. And the equipment was from the eighteen hundreds, you see, and they keep it running. That's all bygone. So what is moving forward is where you're going to have opportunities with renewable energy, AI, there's still going to be discussion of pharmaceuticals. The new administration seems hell-bent on having certain things manufactured in the United States, which may increase the interest in manufacturing, but only multi-needle so far, they were not a major manufacturer. So, sorry.
Yep, no, the discussion on, I'm just going to go back to the power plant. I think it's very important that you actually identify the size of it. Over the last sixty days, I've heard two-hundred, four-hundred and a gig. We really need to define what it is. And then depending on what the size it is, so people understand, if you say it's two-and-a-half times bigger than a certain one, or it's half the size of that one, or whatever the case may be, it's going to be a lot easier for you to move forward versus you just throw out a number that's going to mean nothing to anybody. So and we, it's great to shoot for the moon, but do you actually need one of that size? A gigabyte, right? No, a gigawatt, whatever that is, gigabytes in your world. But a gigawatt, right? Is that, is that what's needed? Or is it just a watt, right? So it's hard to jump behind watts, and something like this is a very serious impact to the town, to everything. So I think we need to be responsible about it and really identify what that need is.
I definitely think it's time to, we could even just have a conversation already because we have this data already on capacity of the gas line and what flows through it. You can only build a plant that can draw enough gas to run.
Well, and how much they want to give you out of that.
And right, and how much would the owner of the pipeline be willing to allocate to you? Which makes the bigger conversation of gigawatt completely, in my mind. I don't think that it's a viable conversation for many, many reasons, but the physical reality is we just really have enough gas to sustain the supply. I always think it's fascinating to talk to people who are aware of utilities because they look at the world so differently than the rest of us. But they know where everything is. This gas line that runs through Douglas ends up running down into Rhode Island and terminates in Cranston, where it is used to fuel the power plant in Cranston that supplies power to all of the state prisons in Rhode Island and other campuses owned by the state of Rhode Island that used to be part of a bigger complex. So the mental health institution was there on, I always mess this up, it was Pontiac Avenue or Phoenix Ave, but it's in Cranston, it used to be the Lad Center.
I think it was Pontiac Avenue.
It's Pontiac Avenue, it's now the, every major state department, other than Department of Administration, Transportation, and General State House, they're all down there in Cranston. Everything, Homeland Security, Department of Labor.
The Rhode Island Tribunal.
And numerous traffic tribunals and Department of Business Regulation, all of that is powered by a gas-fired plant that's there in Cranston, to which deliveries of gas are guaranteed. So you cannot take their gas here because you have a better idea. It's, they have to have what they need all the way down there. So that's one of the considerations, but a lot of this has been mapped out and determined. I think you're really looking at two-hundred versus four-hundred or not doing that.
And in order to get the data center, you need to double source if you don't, so.
Yeah.
So you had to crossroads, whether or not to pursue the data centers or not, so. Anyways, I, hopefully that gives you good direction, Matt.
Well, it starts to refine the conversation. I think for the next agenda, it'll probably get you much more detailed with this.
All right, anybody else have anything on that? Any more on that? You have anything else on that, Tim?
No, I agree with a lot of what was said. I would say having this item on the agenda over the past couple of months has been helpful. It probably took me two meetings to wrap my head around the idea that the little town of Douglas, through Matt and Bob's vision, really should pursue this. This is nothing to sneeze at. If the opportunity to bolster the town's tax revenue is there, it's something that we really, I think, have a fiduciary responsibility to put before the town. So with that, I would be very curious to see what Chris Pukka has to say, and actually, I do have a question, and Matt, it might not be answered now. In regards to permitting, what role do the, does the Healey administration have over this project versus what the town of Douglas would actually have?
I think we can't answer that question tonight, even if we felt we could.
Say again?
We wouldn't be able to answer that question tonight even if we thought we had great information. Because yesterday, we had the inauguration of a new federal administration. If you're following what the new president has said about making the country competitive in tech, it may be that the federal government starts to assert certain preemptive rights. So no matter how much a state bucks, they might end up getting resources located in their jurisdiction because the federal government's made it a priority, either for national security purposes or other reasons. There are many agencies with jurisdiction over the permitting process for any kind of power plant, any kind of power generation. And here at the state level, sitting here tonight, the most of the work is done by the state and its energy facility siting board, which every state has. And the questions they would ask, as well as the MEPA process, so that's your environmental compliance, and a lot of the burden of proof that goes along with all of those things. From time to time, what we see the feds doing, and this is near the end of my heart because this happened right down the street from my house, and what's boring is that the locals, we hated the idea of a communication tower on Drift Road. And the mobbed town hall and town meeting to stop this thing, and the zoning board went along with the people and voted down all the permits. And at the end of the day, the applicant said, but the FCC has determined it to be necessary. So thank you for all of your comments, and the thing is built. It is loaded with antennas and equipment from all the carriers because they clearly had a need for the tower. And the FCC just said, we're going to preempt you, you're going to build this thing. Regardless of the height restrictions or anything else, they cut builds. And I can certainly imagine that under certain scenarios, if the federal administration decided to follow that course of action, this FERC is a very powerful agency. Having said that, it's a question for research and discussion the next time we talk.
Very good. Number thirteen, Board of Selectmen goals, town goals and town administrative goals.
Mr. Vice Chairman, just a suggestion, the absence of myself in the room and Hal, who's out of town. I know we've been, had this on the agenda a couple of times, but to have a meaningful conversation, the whole board should be there.
Yep, that's fine. What else, what I will do is ask the members that can hear me tonight, is to actually think about it and come up with some things if, if you choose to do that, just to be a little more efficient because it keeps going, going on the agenda like you had said, but no input each and every time. So if we don't have anything, we don't have anything. But if you have something, the chairman, myself and the administrator are looking for some feedback so we can move forward. With that, we'll move on to the town administrators' report.
I'll be brief tonight. This is a reminder, we have two-hundred and eight thousand dollars in the budget for snow and ice as of the thirteenth of January, so prior to this storm. We had already spent one-hundred and twenty-nine thousand. This storm was probably on the expensive side. It's very challenging for highway to clear the streets when temperatures plummet to this level because road solve is really not very effective under twenty degrees Fahrenheit. So we're kind of in this cycle now. If you see it, it's black and shiny, it's ice now, water. And we can never predict where this account's going to end up. So I can, the last two years running, by the time we get to the middle of January, we were thinking we were going to keep all of the money because nothing had come falling from the sky at all. And I think one year, I was taking pictures of roses blooming in my garden at Christmas. And not this year, right? So, but who knows? This could be it, right? It could break and roll, but nothing will happen. So I don't want to jinx us. We have, at this point in the year, sometimes expended less and then ended up coming back for more. Right now, we are on track. Let's say this storm was probably closer to forty thousand, you know? We've got enough for another six-inch event, eight-inch event, and then after that, we'd be starting to.
Snow's our friend, always says that.
Definitely true. And sometimes everybody wants me to give them a number on the budget, especially the capital budget. I can't really nail that number down until the winter ends. Because if we go over what we put in the operating budget, we need to use free cash on the deficit in snow and ice, and that reduces the amount that's available for capital. That's definitely how that works. As for the rest of the budget, nothing has changed really since last Tuesday when we were here with the finance committee and prior to that, with the board, this board on the Thursday before that, we just went over the parameters of the budget. We're still working on major unknowns, which are going, this year is going to be, you know, the school department's request, BBT's request. I had an important conversation today with a long-term industry contact and friend of mine who is very much aware of the property and casualty insurance business, currently working with another Massachusetts municipality that's not far from here. And I told him what we were spending this year for Maya Premium, and he just looked at me and said, that's absolutely ridiculous. There is no way you should be paying that much for property and casualty insurance. And so I think it's time to put it back out there. You know, we, three, four years ago, we did that the last time, our premium was right around three fifty-nine, three eighty-nine. This year, it's six oh nine. It is a. It is a lot of money, and while the town may have generated a certain amount of expensive claims, most of those claims are now rolling off, a track record that will be taken into consideration of rates then. And I think frankly, Maya, as long as we don't buck, they'll just keep charging us, and we'll just keep paying the bill. So there's a point in time where we're just gonna poke them in the nose and say, we don't want to pay that now. Tell me why, how? But certainly, if our fellow community that's, like I say, not that far from here, and almost two times the size of Douglas, is looking at a premium of 350, 360, then why should we be paying so much? It's no longer responsible to just put that in the budget and question, so. That's, I'm not for true.
You gonna say something, Matt? All right, Tim?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Matt, when would that process begin?
It's gotta begin really soon. Now, you guys have already voted for me to do this, so I will take the old RFP, I will update the dates, but not a whole lot else is gonna change.
We get to do it again, Tim. No Peloton.
I know you're excited.
I was just gonna warn the newbies, get ready to hold on to your excitement hat. Just my one request is that we make absolutely certain that we're talking apples to apples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what we learned from the last time is we really only want to have one meeting for this, and apples to apples.
Right.
The difficulty of that is that our statewide municipal cooperative program may be operating within limitations that don't apply to private sector categories, that may have more flexibility to work with us on some things. And we'll, we'll work harder this time to identify the unique value proposition offered by each.
Well, the biggest thing with Gallagher is they couldn't do that chunk portion of it.
The IOD portion. As we all know, I do, I do want to make this part of my report, the Commonwealth is in the world of hurt right now, and it's going to pay back the feds $2.1 billion that somehow, I find this hard to believe, but I guess it's true, the Baker administration messed this up to a fairly well during COVID, and now has to pay the feds back $2.1 billion.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, and I don't care how many times you break up a billion, it's still a really big number.
Yeah, surpasses our budget.
The town of Douglas is a decent bit of the state ULI fund, we are self-employed. So we do work with Maya on our, to administer our unemployment insurance program, but we're not part of that fund. Very unhappy days for the state administration.
On the property and casualty insurance, when you go to a three-bit, if we, you know, we reduce our footprint from the old grammar school, you know what I mean, when you have abandoned buildings, you're gonna pay, you know, an outrageous high premium, because it's a vacant, it's a liabilities, usually almost like 34, 450.
Vacant building coverage is actually separate.
Is it?
So you, if you want to know the price of it, you can look at it. Look, it's money you'd want to save.
Yeah, that's all.
But the lion's share of our premium is really driven by the major claims we've had to cause damage, both the school building and the.
And school building, that one's falling off.
A flood, that's the one falling off. And this fuel spill won't be on our record. So as it goes further in the past, it gets less and less weight in the loss projections, so.
Is that a wrap?
That is where I'm gonna wrap that up. I will tell you, this week, we're working quite a bit on this whole economic development, power, potential tenants for the existing warehouse, conversations. We'll also be spending a lot of time with the school administration, going through scenario modeling around a teacher's contract and what they think we're gonna do over the next two years. That will be the lion's share, but those aren't my office.
Are there any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? There is one thing, and I don't know if has to be an agenda item, but we need to sign a cover letter for the ABCC, it's in a red packet in the office. Tim, I don't know if you're aware of that, but if you get a chance, you can sign it. We'll have the majority of the board on signatures if you can't get in, but Lisa needs to submit that with all the approvals that we did on the licensing. We still good on the?
If there.
What's that?
Hey, Mike?
Yep.
If there's a party, I don't need to sign that, we'll just get that out and save.
Yeah, yeah, you got three signatures on it, so you should be good. The MSHG potential litigation, is that still on, Matt?
Yeah, it will be very brief.
Would you like to lead into that, Mr. Smith?
We'll try.
Sorry, Tim, but he has taken your spot on this motion.
Ross, let me tell you, I, you do a great job, and I say, master it, you're doing great.
Don't lose that script.
All right, I'll make a motion to move to executive session to discuss potential litigation with MSHG, and to reconvene into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Smith, aye.
Stevens, aye.
Boal, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.